Welcome everyone to the City Council meeting. The Library Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. This is a regular meeting and today is Thursday, January 15th, and it is 1:00 P.M. So, welcome, and we will begin our meeting. And first of all, we will have our flag salute, and it will be led by our wonderful City Manager, Randy Binder.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Cindy, would you please call roll now?
Thank you.
Mayor Prokhem Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Mayor Smotrich?
Here.
Okay. And moving on, we have a couple of presentations today. The first one is going to be done by our Library Director, David Reed. And he will be introducing some of the members of the Library Advisory Board. While I'm coming down in front with him and his microphone, I will just tell you that the Library Advisory Commission advises the Library Board, which is the City Council, and the city staff on the development, operation, and maintenance of the library services in the city of Rancho Mirage. They typically meet the second Monday of each month at 11:00 A.M., and they meet at the wonderful library. So here they are, and we welcome all of you. Hi Dorothy, and Linda, everybody, it's nice to see you all. Hello, hello. Okay. Why don't you come down in front and turn around, and we'll face you, face the audience so we can get your, your pictures of you. David?
Mayor Smotrich, members of the City Council, it's my pleasure and privilege to introduce to you this year's Library Advisory Commission. Our Commission Chair is Carl Brown. And let me read you a little bit of background on Carl, very impressive. Carl has enjoyed a career in public education as a middle school teacher, a high school teacher, and a community college instructor. He earned his PhD in English and Education from Stanford University with his postdoctoral work at Harvard University. Dr. Brown was named the Alan K. Smith Lecturer in English Composition at Trinity College in Hartford, Connecticut. He was professor of English and Associate Dean at Cal Poly State University, San Luis Obispo. Dean of the College of Education at California State University Stanislaus, and oversaw graduate education programs at Cal State San Bernardino's Palm Desert Campus before retirement. He serves as a board member of the Stanford Alumni Club of the Desert and as a member of the World Affairs Council of the Desert. Dr. Brown lives with his wife, anesthesiologist Laura Slaughter, in Rancho Mirage. Their son Morgan is a software engineer working for Apple Computer and LinkedIn. Risa Lumley is our Vice Chair of the Commission this year. Risa currently works as the Librarian at the Palm Desert Campus of Cal State San Bernardino, where she is also a student pursuing a doctorate in educational leadership. She has been working in academic, medical, and research libraries and volunteering in public libraries for over 25 years. Dorothy Lyons-Berns was born in Los Angeles and was in the restaurant business. Her first success was Saddle &amp; Sirloin in Hollywood. That's just, that's a great name. She moved to the desert in 1971 and reached Rancho Mirage in 1999. Dorothy owns Lyons Restaurant in Palm Springs, the African Queen Restaurant in Palm Springs, and the Palm Springs Candy Company. She's been an advocate for pets, and she is very philanthropic. Her children, son Kip, an attorney now living in Canada, and daughter Carrie in Colorado, are a major part of her life. She brings a lifelong interest in books and reading to her work as a Commissioner. Linda Bray. Linda is a native Californian. Linda graduated from the University of Southern California. Linda and her husband Peter moved to the desert in the early 1960s, becoming first a resident of Palm Springs, then Rancho Mirage. Her career was in public education. Linda served as a classroom teacher, a principal, and as Assistant Superintendent of the Palm Springs Unified School District during her time of rapid growth in the student population. Linda volunteers at the Rancho Mirage Public Library Booknuk and was the first Chair of the Library Foundation, the fundraising arm of the library formed by the City Council in 2010. She served as Library Advisory Commission Chair in 2013-14. Linda is a generous library donor, with her support focused on programming and history. Kurt Pickarol retired three years ago as CEO of Associated Builders and Contractors, one of the largest construction trade associations in the United States. He now devotes much of his time to volunteer work. He works at the Eisenhower Medical Center Auxiliary, Mended Hearts, and his Homeowners Association. Kirk brings a keen analytical approach to the Commission, along with great interest in the library's mission of lifelong learning for all ages and interests. And that is our Commission for this year. These are great Commissioners, and our meetings, I think, are very productive, and they definitely help the city and its library. Thank you all.
Thank you, David, and thank you to all of our Commissioners. We're so glad you could all be here today. And the next presentation is of another Commission, and this is the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. And we will have the introductions by our staff liaison, Linda Hodge. And while they're coming up to the podium, we will tell you that the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission is established to receive, hear, and determine petitions regarding the city's mobile home rent control ordinance, and to investigate and determine petitions of landlords seeking hardship, adjustment of rent, and conduct hearings of other mobile home park matters in Rancho Mirage. They meet as often as needed, and we are so pleased they could be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council and staff, and it's my pleasure to introduce the Commissioners. Chair Barry Lynn Freebie, appointed to the Commission in 2016, joined the Rancho Mirage community in 2001, and immediately became a part of it. She loves being a volunteer, and along with chairing the Commission, she also volunteers at the Rancho Mirage Library. Every March, she volunteers for the BMP Par Bar Tennis Tournament, and she is an Ambassador of the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce. Vice Chair Jason Agostini, appointed to the Commission in 2013, is the broker-owner of SA Mortgage in Rancho Mirage. He is a longtime resident since 2005, is married, and has two wonderful sons. Sam Spivak, appointed to the Commission in 2012, has been a resident of Rancho Mirage for 36 years, and served the city on a total of eight committees and commissions. He worked on the Board of the Wile Institute of Critical Medical, of Medicine. He served on the Board of the Children's Discovery Museum for 12 years. While at the museum, Sam helped develop the duck pluck and was Santa Claus for eight years. Attorney David M. Gray, appointed to the Commission in 2011, has been representing businesses and net, and high net worth individuals in California for more than 30 years, with experience in complicated business, litigation matters, including securities, real estate, and other commercial dispute. He and his wife Anne have resided full-time in Rancho Mirage since 2004. David also volunteers as the Chairman of the Board of ABC Recovery Center in Indio. Not present is Jerry Berquist, appointed to the Commission in 2005, joined the staff at UCLA in 1975, and remained there until his retirement in 2000. In 2003, Jerry was elected as President of the Colony Homeowners Association, and continued to hold this position through 2014, except for 2012. He is also pleased to announce the colony is the premier mobile home community in the city of Rancho Mirage. Not present is Mark Stewart, appointed to the Commission in 2014. He is a local business owner who has resided in Rancho Mirage with his wife since 2004. They participated in numerous activities and organizations. Commissioners, on behalf of the city of Rancho Mirage, I thank you for your service to this community.
Thank you so much, Linda, and thank you all again for being able to be here today and for all the work you do. And we take so much pride in the fact that we have these Commissions and the Commissioners that dedicate themselves, and it's all volunteer, and they do a wonderful job, and we're so pleased that they can devote their time to us. So every year, we have new Commissioners appointed when there are vacancies, so if people out there who are listening to this are interested in some of our Commissions, please don't hesitate to come to City Hall and fill out an application. And we'd love to have everyone that can participate in our sitting, so thank you again. And moving on to the next item is a presentation that will be done by our Councilman Ted Wile.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the pleasures I have enjoyed is being a member of the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy, where I serve as Vice Chairman. The city of Rancho Mirage is one of 21 members of the governing board. I'd like to give you a little history. The Mountains Conservancy is a state agency that was established in 1991. As opposed to a number of our Commissions, which are local, this happens to be a state agency. And the idea is to protect the natural resources of the Coachella Valley, including the scenic and recreational resources that make our valley so special. There are amazing trails, hiking trails throughout the valley. One in particular goes right behind City Hall here, and around the Ritz-Carlton. The bump and grind trail is famous. The Friends of the Desert maintain a visitor's center on Highway 74, where our residents or anyone can pick up maps for all of the trails that go throughout the valley. The Conservancy is an excellent example of how local communities, state and federal agencies, elected officials, nonprofit organizations, businesses, environmental interests can work together for the good of all. Wouldn't it be wonderful if Washington could do that? We wouldn't have the quagmire. We're very fortunate to be able to do that here. Since its inception, the Conservancy has preserved over 65,000 acres that will enhance the value of our urban environment. The Conservancy buys land, not only in the mountains, but in the desert floor as well. This agency is doing everything in the world to preserve our way of life. Rancho Mirage is very proud to take an active role in protecting our environment. I feel fortunate to be part of that process, and it is my honor to introduce Jim Carpiac, Executive Director of the Conservancy, who will provide more details about the programs and possibly some recent purchases.
Jim, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you, Ted. Mayor and Council, staff members, I'm here, I'm making a rounds of the cities that have members on our board to give an update. I'll be very brief, I know you have other business. I'll give you a little more background on the Conservancy, give you an overview of the conservation community of which our organization is a part here in the valley, and then an update on our current activities. So I have a little slideshow here that you can follow along with. As Ted said, we're a state agency. We were founded in 1991. We are a public sector land trust. There are 10 conservancies in California, the best known are the Coastal Conservancy, the Lake Tahoe Conservancy, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and they all operate somewhat like we do. There's a little difference depending upon the geography. Our governance, as Ted mentioned, we have a board that balances local priorities with state priorities with federal priorities. Most of the cities in the valley are members of the board. There's legislation pending to add Indio and Coachella. Supervisor Benoit is on the board, representing the county. There's a member of the Tribal Council from the Aguascaliente, representing the tribe. There's appointees of the Governor, the Assembly, and the Senate. And then representatives of the local offices of BLM, Fish and Wildlife, Joshua Tree. In other words, all the people that you want to have in the room when you're talking about a policy for conserving land. It also is very helpful to us as staff, because practically, when we want to start planning something, we know who to talk to, and we start talking about things at an early level, and everybody hears it early on, and then we hear what the issues are early on. What do we do? We have broad statutory authority to support conservation of the Coachella Valley and the surrounding mountains. Historically, we focused mostly on acquisition of property for conservation, open space or recreational space. We generally do it through grants. In our early part of our history, we acquired land. We currently own about 5,000 acres in fee. We have another 10,000 acres of conservation easements. More recently, we've moved to giving grants to nonprofit organizations or public agencies to acquire land. As Ted mentioned, we've helped fund over 65,000 acres in the past 20 years. Our funding, there it is, our budget comes from the most, from the state, mostly from the Environmental License Plate Fund. Our capital money comes from bond issues. Props 12, 40, and 84 have brought over $50 million to the valley so far. Prop 1, which just passed, will provide another ton, 10 million. And we also work very closely with our partner agencies to obtain federal and state grants from other programs, particularly those that are targeted toward protecting endangered species or their habitat. So I've mentioned the partnership. There's a number of organizations in the valley, just an overview of sort of the big three. The Conservancy, state agency, we get state bond funds. The Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, a joint powers agency, or joint powers authority, of which Rancho Mirage, of course, is also a member, and Councilmember Kite is the Chair. They are funded for conservation acquisition purposes with local developer fees. Nonprofit organizations, the main one Ted mentioned, Friends of the Desert Mountains, there's another one, Friends of the Palm Springs Mountains, there's a few others. They get private corporate foundation funds. And what we try to do, the three main organizations, CBCC, the Conservancy, and the Friends of the Desert Mountains, is meet regularly and plot a strategy for who's going to use what funds for which property, who's going to take title to which property, and so forth. And there's a very cooperative partnership here. It works very well, and I think if you look around the valley and you see all of the beautiful conserved area, that's as a result of this partnership over the last 20 years, and we hope that will even get better. Moving on, if PowerPoint cooperates, the other key funding sources, federal and state, Section 6 money, you may hear that term a lot, that supports protection of endangered species or their habitat. We just used $2.3 million for the purchase of the Shadow, the former Shadow Rock site over in Chino Cone over in Palm Springs. 353 acres of prime land conserve now forever. That was funded partially by us and partially by the feds. Bureau of Land Management has a land and water conservation fund. That's important for wilderness areas, particularly in the National Monument. The Wildlife Conservation Board has bond funds. Even Caltrans has a special fund for enhancing the mitigation that's required to be done in the public works projects. So the partner entities here, the partner organizations here, try to maximize the use of all these funding sources. And again, as most of you know from working in the public sector, when you're seeking a grant, if you're working cooperatively with another public sector agency or another nonprofit agency, you get priority. Where do we work? We follow the conservation, the habitat conservation plan for the Coachella Valley. As you know, that's a plan that balances, or attempts to balance, development and conservation. It has set aside areas where conservation is targeted and other areas where development is targeted. And we only work in the conservation areas. We work cooperatively with the developer community. There's no antagonism here. The idea is, is that by planning out where is the best place to conserve land for habitat purposes, and where is the best to build housing or whatever, if you plan that out in advance, like the plan did, you will be more successful. And again, it's working very well. All of the conservation purchases that we do build up credits that can be used by developers to get their endangered species permits that are necessary for the development. So it's, it's a cooperative, complementary relationship that I think all of us in the community are very proud of here. Briefly, our acquisition priorities are, first, for the biological resources. How important is the land for either protection of water, protection of natural habitat for species or species themselves? Cultural resources, land where there's Indian objects or former sacred sites, recreational options that are consistent with the habitat values, whether it's hiking, or picnicking, or that sort of thing, or even significant scenic attributes. Some parcels, like the Shadow Rock parcel, combines really all of those. Our current projects are, there's three or four main ones. We're working in the hills above Palm Desert to acquire a 650-acre open space that has some historic structures on it. Looking on former development sites over the city of Palm Springs. There's additional land in Chino Canyon. And we're looking to acquire a lot of open space near the Salton Sea in the east part of the valley that supports riparian bird species. I mentioned trail projects. As most of you know, one of our first projects of the Conservancy dating back to 1996 was with the city here. We hold the easement on land that you own, and there's trails on it, the Chuckawalla Trail that, or Chuckawalla Trail that Ted mentioned. We maintain the trail, and we try to protect the easement from encroachment by homeowners or kids or whomever. And that's been a successful partnership. I'm very happy to work with your staff frequently, and that's an example of some of the things, some of the more unique things we do. We are looking to expand our work in trails. We have selected three sites in the northern Coachella Valley that connect roughly the valley to Joshua Tree. One is in Desert Hot Springs. One is at the mouth of Pushawalla Canyon. One is at Golf Center Drive in Indio. And each of those is ready, almost ready for a trail. There's natural space that makes not a lot of construction necessary. And each has different types of topography, whether it's desert, canyon, or mud flats and mud hills. They're very, very beautiful, and we think we'll be able to bring those online in the next two or three years to enhance the recreational aspects of the valley. Last thing I want to mention, Proposition 1 passed last year. It's a water bond. We have a $10 million allocation in there. The funding here needs, the use of the funds here needs to be tied to the California Water Plan. Cities, local agencies, tribes, nonprofits are all eligible. We're planning to release an RFP around July 1st. We'll have three types of grants. One is for, similar to what I've talked about, acquisitions of conservation land that preserve water resources or habitat. Other is to, another category is restoration of watershed features, like washes, channels, or streams. Even things like, something like removal of invasive species like tamarisk that sucks the water out of the ground, that would be eligible. And then the third category is just water structure. If there's a rechanalization, or a dechanalization, or a needing for replacement of water mains, that would be eligible. We'll be having our public hearings in March about the grant guidelines and the eligibility. The city is encouraged to look at those and to consider whether it wants to apply at some point, or whether it wants to comment, of course. We are looking for new partnerships with cities and public agencies and nonprofits to expand what we do and also to make good use of the water bond funds. The main goal of the state is to get the funds into use quickly to help provide drought relief around the state and prepare for a more sustainable water future. With that, I will conclude with just a couple pictures showing us why we do this, the beauty of the valley. And again, we're open to new ideas, opportunities. Let us know. We have a board meeting every two months. Ted, of course, is your board member. He also, he didn't mention, he's the Vice Chair of the board, and we're glad that he's doing that. You're all welcome to come if you want, and give us ideas, or complaints, or comments, or whatever. So again, thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
And I know we have a lot of hikers and walkers amongst our residents and our visitors, and we also have a lot of people that are very concerned with the desert and animal habitats and water conservation, so it's always great to get these updates and let people know exactly what we're doing and how we can contribute. So thank you again, and thank you, Ted, for bringing them. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now moving on to non-agenda public comments. And this is the time where an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. So if there's anyone that would like to come forward, I know I only have one yellow card at this point, so I don't see anybody else raising their hand, so why don't I go ahead with our new, new Director of our Chamber of Commerce, Samantha Twiddell. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor Smotrich, Councilmembers and city staff. I actually am just here today to give you a personal invitation to our open house tomorrow. So that is at our new location at 71905 Highway 111. We're just behind Perch and Lamps Plus. I'd also like to invite anyone in the audience that would like to come by. It is open to the general public or constituents. I've heard from a couple of you, and I hope to see those that I haven't heard from there if you can. We're between 2:30 and 6:30 in the afternoon. Several restaurants are donating the food, so there'll be some great stuff there. And just a reminder, January 26th is our RAMI Awards, an installation of our board. So I know some of you have already RSVP'd for that, but again, open to the general public. So I just wanted to do an in-person invite.
You want to give us the address and the location of the?
Of the open house?
Yes.
Is 71905 Highway 111. We're in Sweet Age. So we're just behind Perch and Lamps Plus, and that's, we share their parking lot. So that's where we'll be, 2:30 to 6:30.
Right, and there's a lot of great restaurants that are contributing to this. Also, Babe's Barbecue, you want to talk about that, what they're doing?
Yes, Babe's Barbecue and Brew House will be supplying the beer tasting, so they have won a lot of awards recently, so they'll have that there for everybody to try as well. Along, we will have some wine tasting as well.
And can you tell us a little bit more about the RAMI Awards, what they are?
Yes, the RAMI Awards, each year, this is the Chamber's 60th anniversary, so each year, the Chamber members select their best of the best. So we are honoring small, medium, and large businesses, and Businessperson of the Year. Our distinguished citizen this year was decided to be Tim Esser, so he will be there and will be presented as well.
And it's being held where and what time?
It is January 26th, 5:30 to 9:00, at Omni Rancho Las Palmas.
Okay, so they can make reservations by getting a?
Absolutely, online, or give us a call at the Chamber office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the open house again is?
I'm sorry?
The open house again is?
Tomorrow, 2:30 to 6:30.
And phone number if they want to call?
And we have some information on our website, too, rancho mirage chamber.org.
Good.
Thanks.
Great. We'll look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
Me, too.
Thank you. Okay. As long as there are no more public comments, we'll move on to the City Council Board Member comments. And Richard, would you like to start?
Thank you. And good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Rancho Mirage, and a great New Year's beginning, so glad to see you all here today. By now, Rancho Mirage residents should have received, or will be received, a polybag mailing from the city. The mailing includes copy of RM Magazine, our annual branding publication, RM Insider, which is our city newsletter, and a valet parking permit and magnetized business card, which lists all of the important city phone numbers that we hope you will use in the future for any event going on in the city. RM Magazine will be placed in our resorts, guest rooms, and distributed to the real estate companies to give them items to pass out to purchases of their homes in the city. RM Magazine welcomes each year at this time, and the publication provides the following items. It defines our city for our residents and visitors, communicating the city's legendary story of involving luxury lifestyle. It builds community spirit by enticing participation at the city events and activities. And finally, it influences spending at the Rancho Mirage residents, or restaurants, rather, retail outlets and service outlets. This year, the city's magazine cover personalities are Sean and Diane Crainer, owners of Camera West in Rancho Mirage. The Crainers? The Crainers, who have a home in Ranch Mirage, also have two other camera stores in the Bay Area, and they're reportedly the foremost Leica camera dealer in the United States. In partnership with the Palm Springs Life Magazine and their editors, writers, and photographers, our marketing team produces several of these publications. Other cities around the nation, such as Pebble Beach, Santa Fe, and Newport Beach, also have similar magazines, but we think we have the best. Want to thank Robert Barrett, Lori LaFond, and Michael Solange for the great job that they've done in assembling these brochures. We hope you like them as you receive them in the mail, and keep them out for other people to read and learn more about Ranch Mirage. So thanks again to our marketing department, another great publication. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Richard. Dana, did you have any comments? Okay. Charlie, is there anything you wanted to say?
You know, I was just reading in the, reading the warning in the Desert Sun that the Get Testing Campaign for free HIV tests are available in the Coachella Valley, and the ones behind it are the Walgreens drugstores. So anybody that's interested in getting tested, it's free, it's a very quick test, the results are right there, and they also have counseling there. So anybody that's out there watching this, if you feel you want to get tested, and I think it's a great thing to do, Walgreens is there. You can call the Walgreens store and get the locations that they are giving this at. And I urge anybody who is thinking of doing anything like this testing, it's free, and it's quick, and it's safe, and it's a, it's a good health promotion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ted, is there anything?
Yes, the, the city of Ranch Mirage is always looking for ways to better the entertainment and lifestyle of our residents. And one of the things that we've done for the last 10 years, which is not heralded very much, is that we have a partnership with the McCallum Theater, whereby we actually donate money. We've, we've invested with the McCallum over half a million dollars during the past decade to bring, to sponsor three shows a year that provides discounted tickets to our residents. And any tickets that are unsold are distributed to our affordable housing buildings. And again, it's another example, I think, of the generosity of the city and the fact that we're always trying to think about how we can better the lives of our residents. And it was, it made me very proud, frankly, to be able to introduce one of the shows this week, but more important than that, knowing that we were doing it for a very good cause.
Thank you so much. Okay. I would like to move on to Steve Q., but first I just wanted to make, mention that we, we want to report all the good news that is happening in our city. And every once in a while, you know, we have someone that is of great value to us and has given so much of their time and effort and love, and then is going to be retiring. So I want to mention Charlie Rich, who is presently chairperson of our Library Foundation and has served for many years on our Vector Control District and the Board of Trustees. And unfortunately, he's going to be retiring from that. So, will it, Steve Q., take it?
Every second Tuesday of the month for the last few years, I've had the, I've always looked forward to commuting to the Vector Control District Board of Trustees meeting with Charlie Rich. I'd stop by and pick him up, and it's always a nice, nice way to just kind of unwind. And I end up resigning as their general counsel when my firm split up, and they have a new attorney. And so I, I've always, I miss, I miss going to the board meetings, but I particularly miss my commutes with Charlie. The Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District is a special district that encompasses about 2,400 square miles here out in the Coachella Valley. And they're charged with the responsibility of controlling vectors. And vectors are, include the red imported fire ants, which I should point out that thanks to Dana Hobart, he used to serve on that board prior to Mr. Rich. He was responsible for getting the board or the district to actually focus on the red imported fire ants. And because of that, the district established a program where they work with golf courses out here in the valley, any golf course in the district, on eradicating the red imported fire ants. You don't want to be bitten by those things. The district also has programs where they trap mosquitoes, and they, they have these programs that are designed to interfere with the reproductive of mosquitoes for the purposes of controlling West Nile virus. They also have traps placed around the valley that trap INATs. INATs are the ones that spread the virus for pink eye. But unfortunately, they don't deal with Africanized honeybees. So if you have bees that look pretty aggressive, and you call the district, the district's just going to tell you to call some beekeeper to come take them. Well, in any event, Charlie was, has served on the district Board of Trustees, I think, since 2010. So he's been on there for quite a while. And he's, he brought a very calming voice to that Board of Trustees, and a, a different perspective that was needed for that board. And so he's, he's been through a lot there, and I can understand his, his desire to get off that board because it's pretty demanding. But he's done a great service for the city of Ranch Mirage, and the voice of the city, of all the residents of the city of Ranch Mirage have been heard through Charlie. So the city has been very well represented there. And he's going to leave some big shoes to fill there. So I think that everybody should, I think we should give him a hand of applause and to show our gratefulness for what he has done for the city.
Thank you so much, Charlie, and thank you, Steve. And Dana, you would like to say a few words?
If I could, I'd like to just make one, one point that Charlie would make, I'm sure, in his adieu. In Ranch Mirage, a lot of people have pets, and a lot of people have some land that has red imported fire ants in the ground of that land. If your pets end up getting bitten by just one of these ants, it will cause your dog or cat, I don't know about turtles, probably not. At any rate, I digress. They do cause your pet considerable pain. The thing you have to do is get the phone number. Charlie, what is the phone number for the district? Write that number down, keep it handy on your refrigerator or wherever, because the time will come when you'll see these little mounds, and if you don't know how to distinguish red imported fire ants from the regular variety of black ants that we have, you'll see a little mound of dirt. If you get to the side of that dirt and just hit your foot down, good shot, hit your foot down one or two times, you'll see how fast those ants come flying out of the earth. And those, when you see ants coming out that fast, you know you're dealing with red imported fire ants. And they are a serious hazard to your dog's, not only your dog's health, but your dog's life. Because if they get on you, they've killed cows. I mean, they, they cluster, they come out, they just, like an army, on top of whatever live tissue they can find. So I urge you to make that effort to protect your animals. And Charlie, thanks very much for replacing me on there. You did a marvelous job, and they will miss you, and we will have a difficult time filling your shoes. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Yeah, the mayor also wanted me to point out that if you notice there's any standing water anywhere, to call Vector Control, because that's how West Nile virus spreads. They start in these little puddles. And so if there's any standing water in the streets, in the gutters, it's very important to let them know right away, because they'll send somebody out there immediately. In fact, I was, one, one day, I was at a meeting, and they showed a map of where they found the virus, and it was right in front of my house. Right in front. They put the address, I go, that's my address. So I didn't notice the standing water. Wasn't my fault, though.
Okay. Something for us all to be aware of. And if we have encounters of standing waters, or we can see any, any accumulation of mosquitoes anywhere in waters, please don't hesitate to call the Vector Control District. And Charlie comes to all of our meetings here, so I hope at least we'll be able to see you here at the meetings forevermore. So thank you again for all your help. Okay. I think that is all for the council comments. I did want to talk about one thing that was very exciting. And I know Chief Rick Greggs had talked about it the other day at our directors' meeting, and that was something to take place on last Tuesday. And actually, it was Tuesday, I believe, Wednesday and Thursday that was going to be taking place. At the Ranch Mirage Fire Department was going to begin training and drills at the vacant building that housed Chili's and the Grand China Walk in Ranch Mirage Las Palmas Shopping Center. The training will conclude tomorrow, but it included forced entry on the roof, breaking through interior walls and doors, and other training tactics. This is a unique experience for the fire crews to train on an actual building. They don't get actual buildings to train on very often, and this was a real experience, and they were thrilled to be able to do it. The Paragon Commercial Group, the property owners, have partnered with the city to allow for this training prior to the building being demolished as part of the shopping center's rehabilitation project, which will commence very soon. So I want to thank the entire fire crew for letting me be a part of this experience. The staff was on hand to snap a few photos, and Sarah's showing them right now. And a collage of photos will be posted on the city's website and on the fire department page, and newly created page called Items of Interest. And this can be found on the homepage, found under the heading About Ranch Mirage. So we have a lot of exciting things happen, and the firemen were just so delightful, as firemen always are. They were thrilled that my husband, Tom, and I came by and we introduced ourselves. They were so nice. They took us inside the restaurant where they had the machine running to simulate all the smoke that billows inside of a burning building. And fortunately, they did not have to contend with actual fires, or heat, or the actual smoke. But this really gave them a good feel for how you need to drag people out of, and rescue people out of a burning building. And it was an exercise that they were, as I say, delighted to have, because it doesn't happen very often. So we thank them for all their fine work, and we're very much indebted to all their efforts. Okay. I think that's about it.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Randy.
You asked me to remind people that the city does have a taxi voucher program. If you live in Parkview Villas, San Jacinto Villas, Santa Rosa Villas, or Whispering Waters, you can call City Hall and get a taxi voucher. You can get a subsidy from $5 to $20, depending on where you're going to and from, if you live in those projects. And if you call Susan Brantley at City Hall, 760-770-3210, that's 770-3210, you can get a taxi voucher, and that will help subsidize your trips to shopping and medical-related, health-related requirements for all of the city's housing authority projects.
Thank you, Randy. It's a good reminder. Also, just as a reminder, for those people who do not receive the mayor's messages, all you have to do is call City Hall, speak to anyone at the front desk, they'll be more than glad to take your email address. It's, it's a fun thing. People always report back to me that they're glad they receive it, they wish we'd come out a little bit more frequently, although we do it quite often. And it kind of tells people what's going on in the city, and how to be safe, and how to enjoy the things that our city offers. So don't hesitate to call us and give us your email address. We'll be glad to put you on the list, and you'll be receiving the mayor's messages and all the other messages that go out from the city hall, and very often from our library also. So thank you. Moving on to our minutes, and if there are no additions or corrections to the minutes, maybe someone would move to approve?
Motion, you go first.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to the consent calendar, and Randy will be handling this, but if there are no items to be pulled by either the council members or the public, Randy will go ahead with the, the reading of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Good afternoon. We have five items on your consent calendar today. Item number one is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, we call CAFR. It's for a year ended June 30th, 2014. This is a request to receive and file the CAFR and the related audit reports that are in your packet. The Budget Subcommittee has met on this item several times. The Budget Subcommittee is Mayor Pro Tem Hobart, Councilman Kite. They met with our audit partners and city staff to review the results of the city's annual audit and the related reports. The city received from our auditor the unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and that is an external independent audit from Fabric, Trine Day &amp; Company. A copy of the CAFR can be found on the city's website. Our Finance Director, Isaiah Hagerman, is here to answer any questions. Thank you to the Finance Department for working on this. Thank you very much, Isaiah, and thank you very much to the Council Subcommittee for guiding us through the process. Item number two on your consent calendar is approval to approve a proposed resolution and consent to release a public easement that's not necessary for the public's use. This was an easement that was created at the Ranch Las Palmas Shopping Center when we had the city library at that location. The library obviously has since moved. That building's been sold to a developer who's getting ready to comprehensively redevelop the shopping center, and this public easement, which is a pedestrian easement from Bob Hope Drive to the building, is no longer necessary. So this would vacate that. Item number three is a request to appoint Kathy Buckmaster to, to fill a vacancy on the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. This is an at-large, non-voting park owner representative position. Kathy Buckmaster is the community manager at the Colony Mobile Home Park. She's been attending the meetings for, for a long time now. She has a letter from the regional manager of Hometown America, her employer, indicating their consent to have her participate in the commission. And her application and the letter from Hometown America is in your packet for your consideration of approval. And item number five, excuse me, item number four, are contracts. Item number five are demands, and we are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Are there any questions from the public or from the council members?
You know, I just like to say, I've never, first time seeing this financial report. It's unbelievable, the work that goes into that. Fabulous. Very, very, very good. Very good. I did have a question on page 972, paragraph 34. Just kidding.
I'm sure Isaiah can answer that for you.
I'm sure he could.
I'd like to make one comment. I'd like to thank Isaiah for doing such a wonderful job with our Finance Department. We end up with a very clean, a totally 100% supportive audit report, and that has a lot to do with the practices and policies that you instill and require of our staff in the Finance Department, Isaiah. And I just hope that the residents of our city understand the significance of a truly clean audit report. It means that they could find nothing that was of any significant consequence that they could criticize. And they are paid to examine everything in our Finance Department. could criticize, and they are paid to examine everything in our Finance Department, everything that we do in the city, to determine if indeed there are things to be critical about. Because preserving the public funds is certainly the most important thing that the city council can do, and when the city council or the staff are not doing it, an audit is supposed to pick up the reasons why it's not being done. And in this case, we have as clean a bill of health as any audit could possibly result in. And I know, speaking on behalf of the council, that we're all proud of that, but more importantly, we're proud, Isaiah, of the work you've done and the leadership you've provided that got us to where we are. We haven't always been there. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Dana, for your comments. It's nice to have these things pointed out and people given some good recognition for the work they do. So, we thank you all. Okay. Moving on.
I move approval to the consent calendar.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Okay. Motion carries 5-0. And now, we are moving on to the action items. Number six is the first on the list, and that will be taken care of by Britt Wilson, our management analyst.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. The city was recently approached by Imperial Irrigation District, seeking support for their recently-launched initiative called the Salt and Sea Restoration and Renewable Energy Initiative. As you are all aware, IID, Imperial Irrigation District, is an electric provider here in Riverside County and Imperial County, and it does include territory within Rancho Mirage. They point out, and I think you're all aware, that the Salt and Sea is facing a crisis. We're all aware of the increasing salinity of the lake. That impacts water quality. The receding shoreline, which is only going to get worse over the next couple of years because they have that quantification settlement agreement on the water rights, it's going to really rapidly expand its receding shoreline. That exposes the dry lake bed to, and then you get the floating air of the particulate matter. So, there's a lot of issues down there. So, IID has started this initiative. They approached the city. And this initiative would leverage funds to help new renewable energy projects at the sea, help finance those activities that would help the air quality management and the habitat restoration of the sea. The initiative will focus first on developing geothermal energy. The one benefit of geothermal energy over, say, solar or wind is that it can run 24 hours a day. A lot of people forget that solar doesn't work at night or on cloudy days, and wind doesn't work when the wind's not blowing. So, geothermal is something they're looking at, and it would, so it would designate, this initiative would designate the Salt and Sea as a renewable energy development area. It would pledge IID's land holdings to be used for energy development. It would pursue public-private partnerships to develop those energy resources, and continuing to work with state and federal regulatory agencies to get some more transmission lines. A lot of renewable energy projects been built over the last couple of years out in the desert, but we didn't really have the infrastructure to get that energy because they're in a lot of remote areas, so they're seeking to get more transmission lines. This has support of, according to their website, both Riverside and Imperial County, several of the cities, particularly down in the east end of the valley, government agencies such as Seabag, Coachella Valley Association of Governments, Southern California Association of Governments, and the Salt and Sea Authority. The city council's Public Safety Subcommittee made up of, or Mayor Smotrich and Councilmember Ted Wile, did discuss this back in November. They indicated their support, so we did send a letter of support to the Board of Directors of IID. But this would be the next step, sort of solidifying our support by adopting a resolution in support of this. Mr. Swarthout, who's the Public Affairs Manager for IID, is here in the audience. I believe he's brought some handouts that he can address if you wish to hear from him about this initiative.
Thank you, Britt. Any questions from the council? Okay. Any questions from the public on this issue? Okay.
We can't bring Mr. Swarthout here without saying something.
Absolutely.
Patrick, tell us why we're doing the right thing, or something.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members, staff, and ladies and gentlemen. My name again is Patrick Swarthout. I'm the Public Affairs Officer for the Imperial Irrigation District, and this particular initiative is really critical because the sea is pretty much out of sight, out of mind. It kind of goes in these waves where we, everybody wants to do something around the sea, and then all of a sudden, you know, the initiative goes away. The last one was SB 1139, which was an initiative to create 500 megawatts of geothermal power. And unfortunately, even though they had all the votes on the Assembly and the Senate floor, the governor said he would not sign the bill. As a matter of fact, he said he would veto it, and it would, you know, just go by the wayside. Randy is right that, excuse me, not Randy, but Britt is right that geothermal is a base load, considered a base-load energy supply. It is renewable. It is, when you look at it and all the incentives that came out for solar, it really wasn't comparing apples to apples when you're looking at renewable energy. Geothermal has been down in the Imperial Valley area for, since the mid-'80s. Of course, when everybody freaked out when oil went to a price of $44 a barrel, they thought, okay, the end of the world's coming. So, they created what was called Standard Offer Four contracts back then, which allowed the investor-owned utilities to do these projects out here. That's how come you have all the windmills out here. That's how come we have 600 megawatts plus of geothermal energy down around the sea now, along with several other renewables. At that time, they were just testing it and trying to work things out. They had 10 years during that contract, was good for 10 years, and then it expired, and then they were supposed to compete on the open market, which most of them have and can. And then, the state of California, next step, was to create a renewable energy portfolio standard, which now is at 33%. Originally, it was all the investor-owned utilities, which is San Diego Gas Electric, Edison, and PG&E, were required to at least meet 33% and several milestones from when they passed the law to 2020. It reached the 33% by 2020. Since then, they've included all the municipal utilities, such as IID, LADWP, SMUD, and Anaheim, and all the other ones. Everybody seems to be hitting those milestones. We'll be at 25% by the end of this year on IID's portfolio standard. Most of everybody has that, and even more than that, available in the queue up at the California Independent System Operators system and at the California Energy Commission, where they could supply a lot more than 33%. So, part of why the governor said he was not going to sign that bill was he had his own ideas about what his energy policy was going to be. If you heard his speech at the first of this month, you heard him say he wants to take it to 50% renewable energy portfolio standards by 2030. So, we're going to be at 33% by 2020. He wants to take it to 50%, and we think that that's going to be a critical part of this initiative because you've got problems now with the system. It cannot all be solar because what they have to do is build 800 megawatts of spinning reserve out here to back up when the clouds come over and cover up the solar and when the wind doesn't blow. So, those kinds of things are going to be thought about when this comes forward. We're pushing very hard to the state to reintroduce another bill that would at least start that process in creating megawatts of energy of geothermal, which, again, is base load. So, I thank you for taking this up. I thank you for sending a letter to our board, and if you do pass this resolution, I thank you for that as well, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Excuse me. Does this have any kind of funding with it for?
No, there's no requirements for funding from any of the participants. We're not looking for funds. As you know, as legislation moves forward, or any kind of initiative moves forward, when we've got the support, we can go up and say, here's everybody that's on board with this. We need to get something done. That's how, that's what we're looking for here, so there is no...
So, the funding will come in the future?
Well, the original 1139, SB 1139, was taking a certain amount of the megawatts, the funding of the megawatts generated, and that money was going to go towards restoration. The state is on the hook for a major portion of it, and just to give you a little history, as the sea recedes, the landowners of that exposed playa are responsible for air mitigation. The Imperial Irrigation District owns probably about half of the, what's under the sea in the south end, along with the federal government, and then in the north end, it's tribal lands and IID and different private owners. But the federal government and IID are the major stakeholders in this. To get the quantification settlement agreement passed, because it was a 3 to 2 vote against creating this settlement, the state of California stepped up to the plate and said, we'll back up after the $133 million spent in mitigation. We will back that up and take it over. As we all know, the state of California turns and runs from most of their commitments, and so, we're kind of left at our own will, trying to figure out how we can do it through public and private partnerships. So, that's what we're looking at here. Obviously, the private partnership of this is the geothermal industry, along with, we're hoping to have solar out there on the exposed playa, along with a lot of mitigation. We are looking at doing, continuing, creating habitat so that we create another fishery so the birds, the birds can still, you know, come through this flyway and eat, and so, we're working on all those different aspects of it.
Thank you. Good question. Mr. Swarthout, what is the relative cost thermal energy versus, say, wind, wind energy or solar? That's one issue. And what is the nearest site to the Coachella Valley where we are, where there is actually some company getting solar energy? I know up around Mammoth, they've got a source up there, or at least used to have when I went skiing in those years.
You mean the geothermal?
Yeah, geothermal.
The closest to the Coachella Valley, there's not, the resource is mainly in the south end, and there's probably another 2,000 megawatts of energy that could be produced there, if not more. As you know, there's also a huge mining operation that's going in down there that's going to be mining lithium, so that's another resource that they're looking at. So, the closest is probably from here about 50 miles to the Coachella Valley.
Is it producing a significant amount of energy?
There's 600 megawatts being produced down there right now.
How does that compare to windmills? How many windmills produce 600 megawatts?
Boy, you got me there because they're replacing them right and left, the old ones for newer ones. And I think the largest windmill is about 5 megawatts, but there's an awful lot out here, and I'm not sure exactly how many megawatts they're producing. But solar-wise, they're looking at, you know, we're right now at, gosh, in the thousands of megawatts for solar. Of course, that's sunup, sundown. So, they've created five different solar companies in the south end of the valley have taken poor farm ground out of production, and they call them solar farming now. And then, of course, everything out east of here along Interstate 10 that is 300 and 500-megawatt-type solar plants.
Thank you.
As far as the price, the price is probably, the uncompetitive side of it is, is there were so many incentives to get the solar going to begin with, and all of the incentives went away for geothermal. Geothermal can probably compete probably at somewhere between 5 and 9 cents a kilowatt-hour, where solar right now is, I think, somewhere around 17 to 20 cents a kilowatt-hour. So, it's still more expensive, but with all of those incentives to get solar in, they could, they could make it happen. And obviously, the cost of putting solar in has dropped dramatically with the panel prices being very, very inexpensive. And I know the last geothermal plant that was built three years ago was over $100 million, and that was for 50 megawatts. And the reason why they do 50 megawatts, or 49.9 megawatts, is they can permit them locally. If you go above that 50 megawatts, then it has to go through the public utility, or through the Energy Commission, which makes it just that much longer of a process. So, they try and do them all in this 50-megawatt increments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me ask you another question. What is being done now regarding the court decision that basically mandated that the amount of water that flows into the Salt and Sea be dramatically reduced by 2016? And of course, that's the reason that the severity has heightened the necessity to do something between now and then. What is the latest, and how do you, how do you view that as being remedied?
Well, from the joint powers, which is SDG, or San Diego Water Authority, Coachella Valley Water District, and ourselves, we're mandated to do mitigation now. So, we've been testing all different kinds of areas of mitigation, whether it's spraying on an accelerant that, you know, creates a crust, or we create habitat, which means that the exposed playa now is wet. So, we're continuing to do those things, and we're continuing to work forward. We're just really going after the state to step up to the plate. And there was legislation passed, and I'm not sure how long ago it was, but when Senator Denise Ducheney was in office, she passed legislation that required restoration. So, there is laws on the books right now that say you have to restore it. So, we're trying to hold our, hold the state's feet to the fire by stepping up to the plate, and along with not, you know, requiring them to do everything, but we're trying to at least get them to the table.
I have a question, off-question on the Tesla situation with the mining for the batteries. Is that blown away?
No. I think that, I just saw a program this morning about batteries and battery storage. Battery storage is going to be used. You may or may not know that the Imperial Irrigation District is out right now in the process of going through RFPs for 20 megawatts of battery storage. Battery storage is going to be critical because some of the requirements that the federal government puts on utilities to balance our load so that we don't have these big fluctuations in energy. So, when you're relying on the solar to be out there and a cloud comes over, now all of a sudden, you've got natural gas kicking in, or you have something else. Well, batteries will keep that, and it used to be 15 seconds apart that we allowed, we had to stay within that. Now, it's going down to five seconds, that we have to stay within the realm of balancing our energy use. And battery storage will do that. I know that the group that's over in, at the IHUB here, and they've done battery storage for several different universities, and they're also in Yellowstone now doing a battery storage. Well, they look at them as microgrids, so you have solar and maybe a gas fire, and you have the battery storage, and all of these things balancing together to create a nice fluctuating flow of energy because that's what you want.
Thank you.
Hope I answered your questions.
Yes. Okay. In the report, it mentions mineral assets. Is lithium the main mineral, or are there others?
Yeah. Lithium, manganese, zinc. There's several of them, but lithium is obviously the key one. Yet, the, obviously, the Gigafactory, or whatever it is, that Tesla's putting in, I don't think that's going to be the only one. They're going to start looking. Once this plant gets established and in, and they're mining the lithium out of there, I have a feeling that they're going to look at, you know, closer to the source where they can actually build their factory a lot closer. And it may not be a Tesla. It may be whomever else.
Okay. So, this is all going to be obtained through mining?
They mine the geothermal fluid. It comes up from the ground in the geothermal fluid, and they extract it out of there, and then use the fluid to generate electricity, and they put it right back in the ground. So, that's how they do it. And they've created a system... a system where they can either hook it directly to a geothermal plant, or they can go out and mine it separately on their own. And that's their proposal, is to mine it separately on their own, as well as connecting to geothermal plants.
Okay. Well, you've really provided us with a good education.
And I did leave some information with the city clerk on, that has, I think we killed a few trees with that.
If there are no more council comments, I'll open up to the public comments. And seeing none, we'll close the public comments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Well, would someone like to make a motion? Or I will.
I'd like to approve, recommend the city council approve Resolution 2015, next in line, supporting the Salton Sea Restoration and Renewable Energy Initiative.
And I will second that. Please, please cast your vote. Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you so much. Now we'll be moving on to the item number eight, and that is something that's going to be...
Item number seven.
Strike that, number seven.
I'll take it.
Okay. And that's something that Randy is going to be talking about.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We all are friends with Clayton Mays, longtime resident of the City of Rancho Mirage. He is the current Palm Springs International Airport Commission Representative for the City of Rancho Mirage. His term will expire on January 31st of this year. He does not seek reappointment, so there was a vacancy notice that was posted as prescribed by state law. This item is to request the council consider making an appointment at this time, and the applications are in your packet for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Randy. And since this seems to be considered as a mayor's appointment, I will recommend to the council the appointment of Mr. William Ryson. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you so much. Now we'll be moving on to item number eight. And this is the item that is going to be handled by our executive director of the library, David Bryant.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Today, we come before you with a request that the library award a three-year contract for an integrated library system, an ILS, in the amount of $84,294 to Autographics. And that is a company based here in Southern California. To explain a little bit about what an ILS is, it's best to probably explain how important it is to our operations and function. What the integrated library system does is it allows us to track our inventory, to determine where it is at any time, and to also put in patron records. That is everybody who applies for and receives a library card and how they use that card. All of that information is stored in an ILS system. It's basically sophisticated software. And I have with me today Yvonne Reed, who is our technology librarian, and she can answer any of the technical questions. But that's really what this system will do for us for the next three years. The staff report, I think, outlines how we went about doing this with an RFP, to make it as open as possible, to seek out the best possible companies to bid on this, to put in proposals. Yvonne put together a terrific team of our staff, and also brought in Risa Lumley, whom you met earlier today on our advisory commission, library advisory commission, to serve on that panel, too. We reviewed things very objectively and very carefully, looking at the city's best interest and our patron best interest. That's what really drove us. We wanted good value, and we wanted our patrons to have a terrific electronic card catalog when we were done, and also to come in at a good price. Now, we are not recommending the low bidder. And I think it's important to tell you why, and that is because the low bidder here is a company listed on page 84 of your packet, and that's Koha. That product is not really similar to the product we're recommending. We put them in there, and we wanted to meet with them, and we wanted to see what they had to offer. But in a sense, it's an unfinished product. We would be purchasing software and actually programming it to meet our needs. I don't think that's really the role of our librarians, and I don't think that's time well spent. And our panel certainly agreed with that, and I hope that you join us in agreeing with that. I think our people are here to serve the public and to do the best job they can. So the software we're recommending came in second in terms of pricing at $84,294 over three years, which I might add is a $55,000, almost $56,000 savings over that time period from what we're spending right now, for the previous, for now and the previous two years. So we think this is a good product. The company Autographics is highly regarded in the industry. They've been in business since 1960, which absolutely astonishes me, that somebody in the world of computers, software, et cetera, could be around for 55 years is pretty remarkable. Their representative is here with us today, too, Albert Flores, in case you had any questions from their side of it. But that is our recommendation. We think this is a good value. We think this is a good product. We know we'll get three very good years out of it, and we will have a better-looking website in terms of the catalog that we show on there. Or we call it electronic catalog, card catalog, a little bit of an antique term, but I think that's what people are used to. And it really displays what we have to offer. We have over 100,000 books. We have 14,000 DVDs. They will look great on your screen at home, in your office, wherever you're accessing, rancho miragelibrary.org. And thanks to Autographics, I think that we'll really show off what we have to offer to people.
Thank you, David. Okay. Any questions from council?
David, I'm not sure that I understand why we are picking, picking the company that came in second $40,000 higher than the one that came in first. What is it about Bywater Koha that, and be as specific as you can, that makes their low bid unacceptable to us?
Their product is called open source, and it is unfinished. It is to be customized by the customer, the client, who purchases it.
What does that mean? Explain that a little bit.
Well, it means that you're not really buying a fully-developed product. It would mean that our staff would have to develop programming skills that they may or not have...
Is that something that is not required in any way, shape, or form under...
Autographics is ready to go. Absolutely ready to go, with a lot more employees to help, their employees, to help us install, maintain, and service it. With the open-source product you referred to, the Koha, what we buy there, well, to make a crude analogy, it's sort of a car with three wheels, and it's really unfinished, and we are to design the product that we will eventually use. I don't think we really have the, I wouldn't say we don't have the talent, but we really don't have the time to do that. What we have, what we're looking for is something that'll serve the customer, the patron, right away. And with Koha...
Koha?
Koha, what we are, what we would be buying is into a membership group, they call it a community, of libraries, that are constantly online, constantly tweeting and networking and saying, "Well, this works, and if you try this, it might work better," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We wanted something that would be fully-developed to really show off all the assets the library has.
Was that clear in our specs when we sent out the request for proposal?
The RFP was quite clear. The reason we chose Koha, we thought they were the best of the open-source companies that might be bidding on this or presenting a proposal. And we really wanted to hear their side of it, how this would work. I think if we had a little library and a lot more time, we might be better with that open source. Not better, but we'd have the time to customize it, groom it, and make it work for our needs. So our recommendation to council, to the library board, is to buy a fully-developed product.
Do we, does anybody with the library, or the city for that matter, have any type of connection or prior business relationship with any of these three companies?
No. No, absolutely not.
All strangers, all arms length?
Absolutely not. We don't know, we got to know the people during the presentations, but that's it. There was no, no connection to any family members or anybody on our staff. We were coldly analytical and objective, and Yvonne Reed is here to speak to that, if you would like. And she did a, I think, a terrific, transparent job of doing this as fairly as possible.
Is there a support system good for you, better than the other two?
The support system is good for us because they're nearby. They're regional, they can send reps out to fix anything that needs fixing, if that's the right term in technology, quickly. They're nearby. We thought that was an asset, too, for us.
I read that, yeah. How long will it take to make the switch over if we do do this?
We'll be ready to go by July 1st of the new fiscal year. We anticipate, Yvonne, help me out, putting, starting in April or so? About a three-month process to make the change over.
What happens after the three years is up? You start all over again, or you just keep the same? What happens?
Well, if there's improvements in the industry, we probably would want to start all over again. We will, and I'm offering a kind of a funny analysis here. I look at Amazon a lot, I think we all do. And that's kind of state-of-the-art of what, we'd love to have something that looks like Amazon. We have plenty of room for each book, each DVD, each item we have, for the public to weigh in and say, gee, this was a terrific book, or this was not such a terrific book. So we'd have room for reviews, et cetera, et cetera. That's coming to us with this product to some extent. Three years from now, in this industry, I always think the sky's the limit. I don't think the graph, the delta is as steep as it was for change, but it's still there.
And in the three years, if we do do this, and they do have upgrades, are they just automatically given to you? There's no upcharge? Do you know that?
Their representatives are here today. Can you, can you fellows see three years from now?
Or even a year and a half or two years?
Okay. Excuse me, why don't you come down front and come to the podium and state your name?
Albert Flores. I'm the vice president of Autographics for sales and marketing. The concept that we're proposing is a software as a service. So the benefit of that, it's one of the, probably the best models for software, is you get continuous updates of the software. So anything that we do with the OPAC, or the search, the electronic catalog, or all the circulation or staff functionality is continuously upgraded, announced to the staff, and provided to you. So you're not locked into, you may know older models, the software ages, you have to buy an upgrade. We don't do that with software as a service. It's continuous, and you get the best of the software that we have to offer as a company.
Throughout the contract?
Throughout the contract.
Very good.
Part of what drove us to a three-year contract was we had briefly a seven-year contract. And in my humble opinion, that is not a wise length of time. That's not a good duration for a contract in the world of technology. We think three years is ideal. These updates that Mr. Flores speaks of will be important to us and timely. And three years? No one, no one has that technology crystal ball at this time.
David, question for you, and somewhat along what Dana was asking about the low-cost provider. Looking at the spread in the contract prices each one of them submitted, seemed to be really a fairly large spread. Are they bidding on the same product? And when we get those numbers back, are they providing the same service? I mean, obviously, you've just told us why the low bidder didn't get selected. But what about the high bidder? I mean, are they, are they providing more information or more data than we want for a better system?
Well, our take on the, as we reviewed, as we looked at their presentation and reviewed their documents, I think they're putting an awful lot of money into building a big sales force. They're putting a lot of money into building a big marketing plan, et cetera. I think what Autographics demonstrated to us was they're nearby. They're not pouring so much money into that as they are into product. We're more interested in the product than in how many ads they have in our publications that we read, our library journal, et cetera. And I don't know whether this is terribly relevant, but it's certainly an observation. When you go to the American Library Association Conference, I think the Autographics booth is fine. I think the TLC booth there that you've made reference to is pretty big and flashy, and can be seen from the entire convention hall. And I'm not knocking their effort to be visible and to lure us in and give us the best tchotchkes to take home. But I think that the Autographics model is a leaner, cleaner, and more development-oriented than TLC. TLC struck us as if it's, it wouldn't do a better job for us, but it would cost us more money to buy the product. And that's probably because we're buying their advertising budget, too.
Thank you.
David, does the library, I understand that, you know, your company will be doing the servicing and so forth. Will the library own the system? Will the library have any proprietary interest in the system at the end of three years?
We do not own it at the end of three years.
And if the library says we're not interested in continuing the relationship or the program, what is the position? Is there a cutoff date? And then is the library just floundering in order to go back into the archives and pull up the material? What is, what is the status there?
Let me explain for a moment. The access to your data, the patron records, the mark records, which are your somewhat intellectual property, the circulation records are readily available through reports without our intervention to you 24/7. So anywhere during the contract, you can extract all of your data, all of the things that make up Rancho Mirage Public Library at any time, without any fees, without any intervention by our company. All of that is readily available to you. The software itself is a software as a service, so it's a subscription model. But the intellectual property that you've put into it is your, it's readily available to you without any intervention by our company. Some companies don't do that. They may have fees, they may have software keys you have to get into. We upfront in our contract make a stipulation that all of that, through reports, through open access, that your staff have, can get to the data. Usually, well in advance of an ending of a contract, that is known, so you may be preparing that type of thing. But we have always been a very open company to not block that. That's not the universal position in our industry. Some of the companies make it a little more difficult, but we have never done that. And I think through our references, that would check to be true. We'd like to see people leave, but if they want to, we don't stand in the way.
Thank you. David, I guess my only concern is that at the end of three years, if you're dissatisfied for any reason, and you desire not to do, continue doing business, that the doors are closed, and, you know, and you're out of luck until you find another operator, and you're not, and you're not able to put your fingers on the material.
Typically, what would happen, we're at the end of a three-year cycle now with a company called Cersei Dynex. And Yvonne started this process last summer. So a year ahead, fully a year ahead, we saw the future, and we did not want to continue with Cersei Dynex. We found that every change we suggested, requested, came with a price tag, pretty significant price tag. And we thought that after we did this RFP, it was made clear in our request that these changes are evolutionary and should not be revolutionary so that we have to pay an extra fee. So we will know certainly within two years of this. Well, I hope to know within the first day, and the product we saw presented looked awfully good. And the samples they showed us included some of our collection. And our library looks fabulous on the screen, and that's how our public accesses it. So if there are issues within two years, we would begin the process, begin an RFP for the end of this three-year cycle, so we would move seamlessly into the next. I hope we don't have to come before you with any apologies, and I don't expect to. I think we're going to have a really good three-year run, and whether we continue with Autographics is as much in their hands as ours. In terms of pricing, service, support, installation is going to be the big test. The three-month period, April, May, June, that's going to be a very important time. And their proximity to us, I think, is a big plus.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flores. Any questions, additional questions?
How long has your company been in business?
We've been in business almost 65 years.
Still new, huh?
Still been there.
What other libraries do you have?
We have approximately 500 libraries spread across North America. We have libraries ranged from 1,000 citizen communities in rural Kansas to...
Can you come a little closer?
Certainly. To statewide systems. In the state of Tennessee, nearly every public library in that state uses one common system. uses one common system for circulation, or what we call integrated library systems. So we have approximately 500 contracts, if you will, or end public libraries. And I want to stress, we specialize with public libraries. Some of the companies in the industry do academic, school special libraries, law libraries. We specialize just with publics to focus our attention on the unique needs of a public library, which are quite different than an academic or a school library.
David, will this system handle the growth of the library for the next three years? Are we going to be with plenty excess opportunities for growth?
Oh, I think it can handle what we have now and more. That's both growth in the collection, that is, the items, the DVDs, the books, eBooks, et cetera, and also in terms of use. This system will, can certainly be stretched and accommodate that.
If I can add, I think your circulation is about 800,000 items a year. We have a system...
600.
600, I'm sorry. We have a system that has approximately 8 million transactions a year using our system, so it can scale up very nicely to what you're doing. And we've put projections into our pricing. So it's not priced today, it's priced three years in the future in a scaled value, so there's no, additional charges would occur if circulation or the library becomes even more popular. That doesn't, we don't charge more for that.
So there's no hidden surprises here?
There really are no hidden surprises. I know that's hard to believe sometimes, but there are not.
Okay. Any further questions from council? Okay, we'll open it up to public comments if there, if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments. And if we can have a motion for approval?
I will make a motion that the council accept the library board award a three-year contract for an integrated library system, ILS, in the amount of $84,294 to Autographics based in Corona, California.
And I will second that. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much, and thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
...for your presentation.
Good, David.
Thanks.
Okay. So now, we are coming to the end, so we will have Steve Quintanilla tell us about our closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council at this point is going to recess in a closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.9 regarding the following cases. Veronica Juarez versus City of Rancho Mirage, and Tabba versus Armenta et al.
Thank you so much, Stephen, and want to thank everybody in the audience who has come to join us, and we wish you a wonderful rest of your day. And the next meeting will be on February 5, and we hope to see you all here, and just be well. This meeting is now adjourned.